First of all, Dr. Lucas is not coming if he didn't know he's out. Number one, his wife is in Chicago this week. So we kind of got that he didn't relate that and he's got a sick kid. He's got something on his shirt, so. So, but I don't really, the two things we're going to talk about are really about us anyway, so I guess it's okay. I don't know how long this is going to last. Clark and I decided not to order food, but it gets to a point where we think we have to keep going to get order pizzas or whatever, but I think we can be done by six. But we'll see. But, but again, I don't want to rush it either, okay? So, um, we can do whatever. So let's, um, couple of meetings to order. Um, I don't know what's really a meeting, but. So I know you've all, um, okay, so he took off, he took off the other list that I got him.
Yeah.
That was, because did you guys get a list from him, agenda from him on the computer?
I don't believe it.
I think I don't. I think he waited.
Okay, well.
It's been a bit.
I think, uh, it was not official meetings like you talked about. You all know Carson resigned, correct?
Um, no.
Carson Adams resigned.
True, the great climb, yes.
Yes, it just happened yesterday. It just happened yesterday.
I didn't know that.
It just happened yesterday. And so, um, I thought it was on that spreadsheet that I saw.
Well, it was, and then I told him, I said, well, if he's going to retreat.
Yeah, so.
Karen made a motion, so he left home.
I, I, I think his, his intent was to get a, check the acceptance, so we can start up.
We, we can't do that.
We can't do that at a retreat.
Well, we should talk about that thing.
Yeah, we can talk, we can talk about that. That's, uh, yeah.
But I think we should.
And we can't, we can't make a motion?
No.
No, it's actually just a retreat, not official meeting, even though it's a public meeting, public as well.
Same here.
Yeah, but it's not an official, oh.
Yeah, we never did any of our work.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't know.
Okay.
Has anything else come up?
It's, I didn't have something else come up today from our doctor, so we might end up having.
I got me Friday morning.
Yeah. Yeah, he sent me an email this afternoon, he said.
I think you can chat with him, can't you?
I can chat with him, yeah, we should chat.
We'll have to chat over at Doctor Paul's.
Yesterday, Trista there came to town and told that she could follow a grant that he could apply for that would do some ADA compliant playground equipment.
Oh, yeah.
For the sixth grade, you know, or whatever, so, oh, he called him on a credit, let him support her. Ooh, wait a minute here. It's a policy. So he said, oh, okay, I'll make a request. So he did send an email this afternoon, um, his request, he said that, you know, the, the playground equipment, Dr. Paul just found out yesterday, but unfortunately, he has to send it in on Monday. So sometime will, isn't, especially now, we have to have another meeting to.
So when is this grant due by?
It's due on Monday. He asked, no, no later than Monday, once he.
So it sounds like we have to have a special meeting Friday morning.
Yeah, we could, you could accept Carson, yeah.
You could accept Carson's that.
So he wrote a nice little letter, we have the sixth grade project.
You're going to be gone, but I'll be in, no, but I can be. Well, okay. I, I think you, I think you're favorable.
Absolutely.
So as long as they'll form, we just have to have a fast meeting to approve all things. Vanessa, okay with that?
Yeah.
Eight o'clock, seven thirty?
Yeah, like, where do you think it just?
It's just going to be, all, all we're going to do, all we can accept, accept his, uh, grant, so we can get the paperwork done and accept Carson's resignation, so they can hold, hold up, um.
Maybe, maybe before we set it, maybe we should figure out if there's other things that we should do in a special meeting.
Well, I agree, I agree, but I mean, it's still, it's still after Friday though.
I mean.
For a present grant, it's got to happen Friday.
Oh, right, I heard it. Yep.
I'll say we can't, I'll say we can't have more things to it.
Yep, right.
I'll say we can't have more things to it.
Okay, seven thirty.
Seven thirty?
Sure.
Fair enough?
It can be between.
Maybe after our experts have been here Friday morning? Give me a little.
I'll be gone. I could probably be reached by someone, if he needed this, okay? Um, actually, I can be right after Charlie does one then.
Okay.
Then we're leaving probably, so.
Okay, and then we'll discuss those two things we just talked about now, as Vanessa said, if something comes up between now and then, we can add it. Okay? All right. Anything else? Okay, so let's start.
I'll follow him up, I'll ask this afternoon.
Yeah, so we'll have to head up a thing tomorrow. Okay, so let's start with this, um. I want to switch this and do the survey summary first. Everybody okay with that? Let's do the survey summary. That's the way, that's the way my notes are, like in my mind, so. Um, we'll start with this, um. I think it's acting, we'll split together just to kind of do that, but doesn't mean that you can't have or do that. I, I would like to start off by saying, um, to me, this is still going to be an ongoing process, and this is a working document, and I think it's something we want to look at, and just like we were looking to talk about today, we're not going to be done talking about it, we're going to keep trying to find ways to improve us more and improve us at school. You all agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, just so you know, we don't have to dead necessarily say, oh, this is it today. No, we can keep going on this, we can keep working on this, we can keep finding ways to improve ourselves. All right, so we'll start with number one, and then how would you rate your satisfaction with the school board? And, uh, the common themes that were put together was lead to the united board, um, focus on students and staff, too much personal agenda, and improved communication and cooperation. Anybody have anything to add or to comment on any of that? Okay?
I guess I'm okay as long as I, he said, yeah, these are things that we'll keep revisiting and working on and, you know, whatever, because we can't do everything at one.
Okay, and so, um, summary of the general tone, responses range from very good, recurring frustrations around perceived bias and communication gap. Well, some respondents praise individual members, others voice concern. So I, you know what? That's going to happen no matter what. So that's something we have to look at and be positive about. Um, rebuild unity and trust, routine building, and shared vision setting. Okay, so, let's talk about this, what are your thoughts about going forward with the V-Legendaries? Is this going to help us be more united, or is that?
I really don't know if I can get much out of this myself. Maybe me a better board owner, I mean.
I, I have to agree. I think some of the things that we've been, like, some of the tones that we've kind of implemented with it, like, I think what we're doing, like, to make meetings more efficient is something we, you know, probably every board ought to do, and I think that there's been some positives, but ultimately, I think that there's a, like, there's a lot of really, like, high-level conversation that it seems to, we seem to always just kind of get convoluted. I feel like we always seem to be kind of going nowhere with it. Going.
I think I like that.
I like the idea of goal setting and.
I like the goals and the guardrails for now, you know, I think that's a good thing, because a lot of the things that we, you know, that we wanted, we kind of put it down. So I think those are good to keep going forward, whether it's for us, or superintendents, or staff, or whatever, I think it's good things for us to look at and to keep, trying to keep those goals, maybe in guardrails going forward, but.
Okay.
So I think the first year is up, I think she said June 30th, and then we get through the logical again.
That's what all we did, really, had accomplished was.
Yeah.
We did a little.
Have you ever seen that regard, Seattle?
Yeah. A few goals.
Well, you both regard those, don't you?
Not really, we're totally.
But I mean, but, I mean, we haven't seen any, like, measures that.
Right, we have, okay, we, yeah, you're right, we weren't somewhere in the, the guardrails, we haven't.
I still have a pile of sticky notes of that now. But I mean, that's, it's hard, if they got them, you know, or whatever, so.
I guess I, I very much dislike the consent agenda, I don't, I don't think it's good for us, and I'm not sure if it's because of the consent agenda, but, I, I mean, half of my questions haven't been posted like they're supposed to be and nobody else's has, and I don't know if that means nobody else is asking any questions or giving any corrections, because there's plenty of questions and corrections that should be being asked and made. So, I, I'm not sure if getting rid of the consent agenda would help with that, that's something for, I mean, it would help me, because that trying to get through that stuff ten days ahead of time is tough.
For me, I guess, mine, you know, like, I've always been somebody toward whether it was, you know, I, time here, I just, some time on the city council, was I feel like a lot of times, it's, what I like about the consent agenda kind of process for routine items like paying the bills, and, and when I have questions, I get them answered, and, and I can get them answered ahead of time, and if, and if they're posted correctly, that's where the, where that, you know, that clarity comes, but ultimately, it's just, I, I, I don't like when we come to a meeting that is to conduct business and then it, it seems like, I don't know, to me, it makes it almost be, it makes, puts more pressure on me to be prepared right away, and it's like, to look at the stuff earlier and to delve into it more and, um, you know, because like, for me, it shouldn't take us thirty minutes to pay the bills, you know, because then, then we're, then we're having a four-hour meeting when it should be an hour and a half meeting.
I don't want to take that step further, those spend so much of your time with communication. So you have been asking questions and giving answers?
Yeah, and a lot of the times, it's simple, like, I think there's been a time where I've had a simple question about, like, it might just be, what is this for, like, say on a bill? And I'll just give Zane and call and be like, oh, that's the company that does this, and it's just like, oh.
Okay, but none of that is getting posted, and that's part of the reason the board looked at like we're hiding stuff.
Being posted on our website, or should we post it on the.
See, that's why I was done, even before with Louisa or even now, I mean, I do the same thing. I mean, whether I'm here or if I call and ask them or whatever, or something, I guess, I need to head of time, but I feel like I should be prepared when the meetings come. I'm not saying everything should be on consent agenda, but some of those.
Sure. And a lot of the questions I do ask, like, I mean, because even with the consent agenda, whether it's the bills or whatever's on there, just there's discussion, and there's time to ask questions on any of that anyways.
Right.
And so, I mean, like, the idea that there isn't time or discussion to be had during that, I mean, parliamentary speaking, isn't true, I mean, if you, you can ask thirty questions on the bills, even if it's on the consent agenda, because when you.
Right.
Make a motion and second, the next item is, is there discussion? You can ask.
Not on the consent agenda, okay? Yeah.
There's, 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 that's not a motion that has limited debate or no debate. There should be three calls for discussion.
Well, that's, if we have questions, Vanessa, to pull off this consent agenda, who knows what to do then, so.
Yes.
We can do that too, but it's like.
Well, the thing is, you can either ask our agenda and things on the bills, but somebody else might have a different one anyway, and I hope that they feel like anybody can ever, can always call and say, you know, we have that bill to Smith Company or something or other, I mean, who cares, you know, anybody from, from any taxpayer can call and ask you what was that company for, if they don't know. They might be one that we know, and maybe they don't, that, I mean, anybody can ask.
What do you think, that the bills aren't being posted early enough? Is that what you're getting at? Or.
No, the questions to the bills aren't being posted, and, you know.
And they're emailed, so I definitely, even when she, when she.
That's something we can work on. And, so, the goal, that says clarify mission expectations to realign student sector goals, but so, to me, V-Legendaries' goal was to spend fifty percent of our meeting on students, student, you know, and, I don't know if that's ever reachable, but at least it's, it's something that I don't think we do enough of. And so, I, I'm just wondering, again, I'm not, um, kind of like you, or all kind of, like, all, like most of you, I'm just kind of like, is this V-Legendaries, like, you know, is, is it really working for us, or is that, but I still like the idea that's making us focus a little bit on the move thing, but.
Right.
I like its intent, but like, I remember when we were doing the whole sticky note exercise and stuff, it's like, I feel like, I, I feel like we can get to the point a lot faster sometimes.
Right.
In what we do. You know, it's like, I feel like, well, you know, spend an hour writing on sticky notes and put them out on the wall, we could have just talked about it, you know, or, you know, and wrote notes together or something, I don't know.
Do we talk about it though?
Well, that's what I'm saying is good, is I think it encouraged us to talk about it, that's the part we do like about it, like, it's that, it.
I seem to like, I seem to like that more than maybe some of the other things, you know, when we sat here and just were able to discuss different things. I, I got a lot of it back days than some of, some of the other. But that's been something I'd like, part of it is, I don't know, it's not.
Okay.
I think if we were, if we did better at, honestly, at following policy, some of those things would happen automatically. It's in policy that we're supposed to review curriculum once a year. Basically, in my time on the board, we've never done that. And we've, we've done a little bit when we needed a new curriculum, but even then, we pretty much just took the suggestion of, of the principal and/or committee, um, instead of do what the board was supposed to do, and I think, I think Sue and March are maybe interested in that, but that's our policy.
Okay. We need to probably look at that.
Yeah, I guess I feel like, I feel like staff and everyone, when they pick out a curriculum, I think it's not like an idea, so, I mean, I have a problem looking at it, but it's like.
And, 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 I think so, also, what you're saying, just make sure that we're updated on their, I mean, and, 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 and prove the changes that they're making, so.
Right, I mean, I was, I was, they were comfortable in saying, hey, this one is really outdated, or I can help us.
Of course, you know, we're all involved in that, in our last board meeting, but we have to change this class, we have to add, so we're all, we're involved in that, so.
Right, and that was the way, the way it was, that the way it should be, as opposed to the last spring, where we had a class or two, and we never knew about it.
And, yeah, I do, you know, you know, I just took that, and, and that's. Okay, what else you guys think, uh, reading this about, uh, the board, anything you want to say about, um, comments you got from this, and how we could probably improve with the board, on how we do? I, I think sometimes, you know, I want to say that for me, as spending thirty years as a teacher, and my, my impression of the board, and now I'm on the board, it's like, it's a whole different world than what you expected. It is not what you expect, it's a lot of different things you're dealing with, but you think, oh, I don't think they do that, I don't think, do that. I used to say, like, oh, no, I'm on here, and I go, you know, it's not as easy as you think, but we need to be, we need to probably try our hardest to be, to be more open about what we're doing, but I, no, I don't think, I don't think it must do anything intentionally not to, so.
And I do feel like, I think we do post things more than we used.
Yeah.
You know, there's never, a lot of it was never on the agenda, so I do like that now, the documents to the board and people know it's documented too, so, that's a good thing, because it shows that, I mean, anything.
Principal's report's online.
Right, yeah, and I'm hoping that people, I think some people have to be essential, that there's, and people tell me that they know, but I think that's a good thing.
They definitely are more detailed when they're on, when they do that, than when they speak to the board. There's good and bads of all that, there's good and bads of all that, as bad as you know, heck, they don't say, but if you watch that, some of them are thirty minutes long.
Right.
And you get a lot of that.
You never feel it taking much time.
No, you never got to take thirty minutes. No.
Well, I think there's some of those good things, like, like that we have a food on that, I think we're posting more, and, you know, everything is out there now, and there's those reports, and, too, it's all.
So, yeah, some of the people that come to the meeting are going to have to do their homework, right, also, to get, hold it, debatten.
To watch it, so that they.
Especially have it.
Right.
Okay, um, again, this is a working document, and if we come up with things that we need to improve as, as a board, we can keep adding to this, we've got notes taken here, so. Anything else, also the board itself? Okay. Section two is about the superintendent, and, uh, it's. I think we need to focus more on what our expectations are, reduce superintendent, than what, what's, since he is moving on, so.
You know, I know we, communication was always a big thing before, for years and years and years and years, and I just think that's something that we have to, you know, try to get across, and it's more so, you know, or whatever, and things have kind of always been up. Since then, it's been there for, I've never talked about this since either, you know, or whatever, or something, too, so that's what we all have to try to. They have, maybe it's superintendent principles, and even for board, everything, they have, they have more of a communication floor, or whatever.
Do they have regular scheduled meetings? Like, simply, uh, uh.
They, they do now.
Is it once a week? So once a week, is that?
Yeah, they do have.
Now, and you guys, once a week, by the board recording, did that happen before? Did that happen before they met constantly?
I don't know if they did, like, formally, like, they do, I'm not sure.
I, it's not that I, well, what I can know of, I won't ever remember it, you know, like.
And Mike's involved in that too, right? Mike's involved in that too?
Yeah.
Mike and the two principals, or?
Yeah.
When did it start?
It started.
They, they, I think during, there was some time, since Robbie's, since Dr. Lucas is gone.
I don't remember it.
Well, isn't that what he refers to, his leadership cap, he called it a cap, I guess.
Yeah, and I'm, not, but there's, and it's part of, part of the, part of the thing is there's too many names for too many things.
Yeah.
Because there's leadership committees, I'm not sure how many, like, what, three? I don't know. There's leadership committee at the high school, there's a leadership committee at the grade school, and there's a leadership committee, curriculum committee, whatever you want to call it, that's supposed to be including the board, that memory.
But the one that are the school, that has nothing to do with that, to me, they're their own leadership ones, and that.
Right, and the only thing is, it's confusing, because they talk about leadership, there's, you know, leadership will be doing that, and leadership will be doing that, and it's like, which, with what leadership?
I think maybe administration needs to be a different word, but I still think it's something that we need to, um, encourage to continue.
Yeah.
And I'm hoping that.
I think that is good.
I think that is good, and I think that, um, he has got a lot better as far as communicating with Dr. Lucas, got a lot better, he may take the board, he gets a weekly update, you know, we weren't getting that before. I don't think you guys got that before with, with public superintendent, did you?
We asked for it.
Which you never got.
We got a little bit better the last year of, 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 of.
Well, once, once in a while, it was pretty regular, and then it wouldn't be, yeah.
So I will give him an effort, I will give him a, at least he's.
But it's something that we can write down, that, that's what it do, and that they would like to continue, and.
Oh, we can.
Call it admin, or what they would call it.
Well, that, that's probably something that should stay through, just because a lot of times, whether it's, you know, especially in some of the situations we've had this year, it's like.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, you know, sometimes it's like, sometimes there's a consequential decision that needs board action or attention, and it's like, making sure that that's right way.
Well, I've told every superintendent that I've been on the board with, that if I'm going to hear it on the street, I want to hear it from the school first. And I think that's a logical thing, kind of station, whether it's a text message, or an email, or whatever, I just, I think it's something they should strive to do, to keep us in the know, so that we don't look, and some kind of, or say something.
Yeah. And I could see nowadays, with, of asking, some things can get out.
Yeah, it's very fast.
You know, for any, you know.
Something, anything get out, things get out before, you know, I had, I had mom tell me that her little second, third grade kid knew Dr. Harding was going to resign before anybody's even had any idea, because her teacher's talking and all that, you know, so, some of those things, yeah.
Some things you can't get ahead of.
Yeah, because of our cell phone, the, the cell phone nowadays, yeah, we're, we're just, leaving, so, yeah, there was emergency, then I, yeah, texts, and, yeah, everybody, people, but, I think, those are two good things that would be good to, to keep continuing.
Anyway, you want to get out, you know, people, I mean, do we know people, they just possibly? Okay, um, again, I think we're, not the way we're the superintendent, I think more of our point is where our expectations are, our excellent. I think he, like I said, I think he made some strides to help with the communications, with his weekly update, so, okay. Uh, let's go to question three. Um, I was starting with resources, like, for your classmate. Um, we get the basis, but not more, requisition process is hard, check and correct the updates needed, and I'm not going to bounce out, more parents fed support, and again, that's nothing that we, I think we've tried our best to do a lot of that. Most staff get basically support, but see, more for improvement, there's always going to be more for improvement, um, and update curriculum, like, our resources, our personal finance, our personal, plus our meetings. Human resources are kind of the problem, I, I don't know. Are you, are, are any of you hearing this?
Yes. I, I, I mean, so, I found that interesting, that after Dr. Harding resigned, and Dr. Lucas went back to grade school for a little while, all of a sudden, we needed care, well, honestly, Dr. Harding asked for care since the beginning of the school year.
Well, I think, I think he applied, because there was an opening for care.
Yeah, that has been, that's.
Yeah, there was already an opening for care.
It's been in the newspaper, I mean, there was a bill, and trying to take the, the painful one for, I think for nine months, that's where.
I mean, that's what was my understanding anyway, that we were always trying for.
Well, then, there was one, I heard, with the nineteen, that moving that one into the bed department.
Yeah.
You know, or whatever, there's another one.
But there was still.
Because there was another one in between, and then that one, they let go, they didn't like it, didn't like here or there, or whatever, or something.
Well, the hard part is that, to be honest with you, just human resources, uh, this is just a blank truth, that I'm sure that we're in need of more human resources, but that's, you know, well, that's already eighty-six plus percent of our budget. Human resources are also really expensive, and so, uh, you know, again, that's the constant kind of dichotomy versus teacher need, uh, between teacher need and, like, say, you know, the taxpayer, even potentially, is that, that's that kind of difficult discussion you have, how, you know, is, how many more do we hire? And, because if we hire more, including their benefits, are really expensive. I'm somebody who's generally probably a proponent of supplying those resources, right? But, you know, they're, they're, they're saying that we're not going to get some comments about that, is just probably not the case, you know, that's kind of that, you know, right now, human resources, it, I'm, I'm sure in comparison with a lot of other districts, our, the way our budget is comprised of, percentage-wise, consisting of human resources and the benefits, is skewed more than most, and I've always wondered, though, with this conversation, is where do you draw, you know, because I've always had this idea that with teachers in their classrooms, like, I always kind of have a, it always kind of makes me feel, ugh, when I hear that teachers are supplying all this material for their own classrooms, and there's a part of me that always kind of thinks, well, shouldn't the school be, the district be responsible for some of that? But, you know, it's, to a point of what is necessity or not, it's like, you know, there's all these different types of certain, specific, like, does the school district have to provide elementary school classrooms with St. Patrick's Day decorations or something? It's like, that's probably not necessity, but like, at the same time, most level of decorations, especially in an elementary setting, is probably, you know, is something you want to have, and it's like, where does that line ever get drawn? Like, I, I never, you know, like, we can't just up and buy everything all the time, but at some point, it's like, you know, I hear about teachers having to fundraise for their own classrooms and all this and that, and it's like, that kind of makes me feel bad at the same time, it's like, should that really be something that's happening? I don't know, like.
Right, and I think.
But I don't know where you draw that line, and that's kind of a hard one, right?
The community's been good the last, we were providing, we had, like, the classroom, there was two or three different businesses, and organizations, and things, or whatever, The community has been good the last, we were providing, we had, like, the classroom, there was two or three different businesses and organizations, things or whatever, and I think there's a lot of that.
Cause there's a really yearly fundraiser though that helps, like, it, it provides money for teachers.
They used to have a carnival, I think now what it is is that one church does a carnival and then they divide it up, like, for example, whatever dollar amount they get, if it works out, that every teacher gets two hundred dollars a year, a hundred and fifty or whatever, or something.
What about that fundraiser that they did? For all the costs?
They kind of earmark, like this year was by our equipment, some years, some years they use it for, they did use part of it that one year when they, getting going on the Baker Space room, one year they use it for some extra little reading materials that went along with the reading curriculum. By teachers, or, or stands.
Right, music for the.
Oh, the music.
Yeah. It's been different.
They kind of got a project here.
Yeah, they did a project, kind of, every year. So that's what they say, you know, so that way we know what.
Well, that's constantly evolving, that's not it.
Yeah, no, it's not, it's not for St. Patrick's Day decorations or markers or.
True. Yeah, no, they usually have a bigger ticket, carnival or whatever.
Well, you know, you know, I'm not gonna pick on anyone here, but some people can handle, say, more kids than other people can, you know, some people, some teachers, they can handle less kids. Everyone's got different talents and, so this, this one says we need maybe more parents, more help, or this one's like, I got it covered. And someone eventually has to make that hard decision and there's people that are tough people at hard decision. And then, in the end, we gotta, we only get so much money. And it's, it's a tough deal. It is, and it's, I'm glad I don't have to make all the decisions. I do my own, my own operation.
And I really worry after somebody bells that are coming through with legislature, it's like, oh my gosh, like that's not the only one who's to say that you're dealing with funding, you have to do more than sixty mil. But we're at seventy right now. So would we have to cut back there? I, I mean, it's like, wow, if we have to cut that all back and can't do more than three percent, it's like, oh goodness, they're only gonna be, in the hurry.
I think, you know, we look at the resources too, it's like, I know, I'm not bragging at all, I know there's a lot of teachers like me, but I develop what I own. A lot of teachers do develop what they're own, instead of going out and buying stuff, do the research and make their own, you, you have to be a process. A lot of my stuff is developed by me. And so, I think some teachers are able to do that, and some teachers, well, a third grade teacher can't do that. They need this tech, they need this workbook, and I didn't need that workbook. So, I'm hoping that they're not being denied that. I don't think we're denying that to them.
I think, I think part of what is difficult with the requisition process is that they're expected to have it done now.
Yeah.
And especially when they get a new curriculum and then they have no resources to, you know, you can't know everything that's in that new curriculum with what you're gonna. And so, I'm curious if there's a way to have X amount of dollars set aside for each teacher for later need. And then, that one year.
Like, turn.
Same as you have last year, well, I think it was part of the school budget. It was, Teachers by Teachers is a site that they can go to. I remember, there's an angel using it here, cause a lot of things you can go to, so you can kind of develop your own, you could make, for like, just dollars, you can get all different stuff and then you can copy, do whatever, and I think that one year, I think, no, damn, last year, we, they all got like, two hundred dollars to spend on this teacher, the teacher sector or something, so that they, if they had extra things they wanted to do or whatever. It, I'm sorry, I get what you mean, but at the same time, how can we do a budget if we don't, we don't know how much we're gonna give them, even or whatever? So it's hard to add something later when there's only X amount of dollars.
Well, that's what we use that aside, X amount of dollars for later.
Yeah, just like putting a line, a budget that's.
Their last year, I think, like, state, you know, I don't know, state numbers, and play it a little bit higher percent or something.
I don't know, because I've never been a part of the process, but, and they would probably be able to answer this better than me, but I think their requisition specific things, not dollars. Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, they're supposed to, they're supposed to get their month's, forty dollars.
I mean, there's, you know, budget, yeah.
And to go with what you said, I remember before these summer classes, oh, that's a really good idea. Oh crap, I can't buy that, cause everyone's gonna buy it.
Or, or, or the, the professional development they have, and there's no, A, there's no time, that's, I mean, that's for them, but, the professional development that they have and then they have no time to organize, to use that professional development, that's a complaint as well.
So there probably should be a little, another one for additional, maybe call it like a.
Or just, or even if they wanna keep it on their supply line, like, okay, and I have no idea what they're even talking this year, I think last year they had thirty. Let's say it's thirty, just an example. But maybe tell the principal that, okay, that line's gonna stay at thirty-five, but thirty is what you're gonna try to strive for. This is what you would ask for requisition, requisitions, but maybe this extra could be, like, that's your, you know. I mean, and I know that all gets added in and things too, I'll be, because I just add more too, but you know, there could be something that, they're gonna put this much on here, and I'll be saying, maybe thirty this year, I'll hop up, I'll do thirty-five, and you know, but this could be some over flow, if you really, you know, have some interest or something come up. I mean, I know we can't, we kill them off, but it could be something to start.
I think my kind of common thing I get out of this is I wanna make sure that staff on the whole feel like they're getting what they need every year.
Right, yeah.
And, you know, like, I know that they can't provide everything that is maybe necessarily wanted, and the idea that, and the idea of need might be a kind of subjective between, like you said, between different classrooms, but ultimately, like, I, I, I don't wanna have feedback coming back to where, you know, we have a good handful of people saying, like, I'm not getting what, what is a necessity for me every year. Like, we, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be having.
One thing that they would need here is every year they would have to have their requisition, and two by the first April, and they would have a list and they would say, need, want, and then there was another one, like, really, you know, it's really cool, you know, or something, and then she would kind of, depending on the budget, could go from there to see, okay, well, we can do this much. And sometimes you gotta do a bit of your wants maybe or something too. I mean, I, I have no idea, that's, I'm like, that's, I don't know, on the requisition process, if that's what they're doing. But I thought basically each school was gonna take X amount of dollars if they get them.
Yeah, I agree, that's not places. You should, like, say, fulfill all their needs and make some, you know.
See if there's something left or want or whatever. It's, it's hard, cause I get it, I'm sure they could all have a list, it'd, it'd run in these pages, I'm sure they'd be able to, I.
Right.
But I did, that wasn't that.
Yeah. Like, probably with Jaxby, I don't wanna say that.
Right, yeah, yeah, likewise myself, you know.
He's in the school, I think that's.
So, I'd like to go back to our conversation about the, the human resource discussion though. And I know that a big issue is because of, if you really, if you really take a little bit of time to look at what happened with the staffing last year, there is a seriously legitimate reason that the grade school is upset because we lost our budget by cutting elementary staff. We, we really did, the amount of staff that they had, that they got trimmed down going into this year compared to the amount of staff that that school got trimmed down, is significant. And, and then, and on top of that, underqualified staff. So, I, I, I know what you're saying, there's always so much money, but that, that was a very, very tough one, that, on the grade school. And they keep, you know, they have, what, we have two to three classes that are a single teacher, and it might be two. Well, unless you count the fourth, fifth grade, which is, most of that is college single teacher as well. That's tough, and it's exhausting, it's, um.
It's hard when you get to that number, like, okay, we have twenty-four, well, but then it's also hard for us then to hire a teacher, and we actually have twelve. You know, where, I get it, it's hard.
And I don't, I don't disagree with that, I'm just saying that, that, that is where a lot of this needs to come from.
Well, and, I mean, I always get, you know, I've said this multiple times too, this is just what's hard, like, like, for air professionals, like, this, this is a labor market that benefits, this is an employee's market, not an employer's market, meaning that employers are fighting for good talent. We, we have to be competitive and we have great, we have great benefits, but benefits don't pay your mortgage or your grocery bill and, like, like, what I, like, I would like, if you wanted to attract really, really good talent for like, paraprofessionals, even, probably that would be at twenty, twenty-two dollars an hour, but that's hard to do.
We can't, we can't afford it.
I mean, the, in this economy, when does it excite somebody, hey, we can start you at fourteen bucks an hour, like, okay, I can't live on that, especially when it's a part-time job too.
And we can't, and if all of a sudden we take this one to be six dollars higher, well, sort of everything, and then we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah.
And I don't think we can, since we are, since we are a curd painting school, I don't think we could ever get out of it. We have to keep that, because, only reason I say that is cause laundry paid first to hourly people, and when we close, I have no idea, but they, they charged us seventy-six thousand dollars to get out of the program. Because there was a certain length, length, time that there was all things that were started back in ten, what, two, forty-five years ago. I can't even imagine, and she said, this is a gal, so I thought, who would you do if you were a school? So I'd have, who would, who would, hourly people, and she said, you'd pay hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's like, so, that's why a lot of schools, well, like, for example, where there's McCusy, they became McCusy Village, they literally just closed Village. And you say, oh, well, that was, it wasn't important to be able to do that. I, I have no idea, none of the superintendents would need to pay their all four of their clients, and I got that phone call from you over seventy-six thousand and some odd dollars. It was a huge hit, thank goodness, we just barely had large amounts left in our.
Well, cause that, that's the thing, like, even whether it's, whether it's the hourly or even, even the instructional staff. It's, on, on our end, the side that people don't see is that when you, which, which I'm glad we do, but when you offer curers or T F R, like, all of a sudden, like, I, where are we at now? Like, we're starting people at, say, like, forty-four thousand, it's like, but they are seventy-five thousand dollar a year employee when it's all said and done, including health insurance, like.
Health insurance.
But, but again, though, like, to the educator.
Right.
You know, those benefits, albeit very good, don't pay your mortgage, they don't pay your rent, they don't pay your grocery bill, and so, and, and that's the, that's the side that's hurting, especially nowadays, and so, you know, that's the thing about.
They'll help them when they get to repairman age.
Right, but, you know, that might be thirty years away.
They are, I get it, I get it.
You know, like, the, you know, the idea of, you know, the idea of a mortgage under nine hundred bucks nowadays, that's like, almost not even a thing anymore, you know, and that's, that's tough, and so, it's like.
It is, like you said.
But, and those benefits, you know, it's, you know, like, whether it's our school district, the city, or whatever it is, you know, it's like, those benefits are great to have, and I'm glad we have them, we have, like, especially like, our health insurance is pretty, pretty great here, but, but it costs a lot of money.
Yeah, the thing with the health insurance of the school, I think it's, you know, it could cost people a thousand, five, it's like thirty-one, is it two, three, five, three, six, I don't even know.
Yeah, it's, it's like, it's just, wow.
Okay, well, well, my name's Galley, from this, you know, it would be nice to have more money, but we must again. I've gone on here that we're, it's hard to be more comfortable and saying, money aside for curriculum, that later needs, that later needer. I've got to work on human resources, work on, worked on that, try to equal whole school, try our best. Again, that might be a little complicated, but I guess we just have to do our best. Anything else, anybody wants to add to that? Am I getting that right? Okay, all right, then on question number four, you feel included shape for the district vision improvement, we're at, but nothing changes, and, and again, that's not as easy to sell ones, I hope that, you know, I think we try, involvement is inconsistent, a lack of follow-through, staff want more meaningful involvement. Well, some, some feel included, many don't see their input, acts upon, their desire for more clarity, community, and good communication. And again, we already talked about that, another goal, any discussion on this?
I think, I think the actual, like, the board involved leadership committee could help with that. I really, really do, if that was actually interactive.
You can maybe have, say that that should be once a month, maybe.
Maybe.
I, I mean, like, he, like, we all, can't say he has to, but he or she, who's over the next superintendent, but like, how we, like, the idea of cabinet, we, maybe we can say, we really prefer you do at least the leadership meeting once a month or something, so that way, you know, you have the representatives in the school, and they will have more than just a couple times a year, you know, or something.
I think that's always good, and this too, is, I'm, I've, and I've said this throughout everything too, is like, I'm so, I, I have such a positive outlook on input all the time. I think seeking input and having more input involvement is really good, but then you have to remember this though too, is that, but ultimately, it comes to leadership to make decisions. And not everybody's gonna be happy every time, you know, like, again, if it's, we can't make things like a direct democracy, or even if it was like a direct democracy, there's gonna be some people that aren't, aren't happy with the decision, and so, that's the other thing that needs to be remembered about some things is that.
Right, ultimately, it comes down to really.
Where does the, where does the buck stop in that, and no matter what, what you're talking about, not everybody's gonna be happy about it. That's just the way of the world, and, but I think that all the different kind of aspects need to be taken into account when it comes to decision-making, but, I just, I don't know, I, I think that that needs to be also remembered though, is that it's, sometimes a decision's gonna be made, made a certain way where there might be a few people that don't like that, and it's just gonna, that's just most, that's just the reality, you know.
Especially if you have such a larger group, yeah.
Also.
We'll be in that much type of, first time, I'll get to, so, yeah, absolutely.
But I think, but doing the best we can, I think, is really important, and I think a lot of people, even if they don't like the decision that was ultimately made in the end, if they feel like they were at least heard, I think that goes a long way.
Yeah, they explain your decision then, this is what, how we came up with it. You know, instead of this, like, I mean, they didn't ask it, they said they have your, that's a lot of it.
Right.
I think so.
Explain that, uh, he or she or we or whoever come to that decision.
So, I wrote down here, board leadership committee, be more active, suggest to the new superintendent to enact that, and, and to continue to, try to hear their voices. I think we, you know, again, it's like that, that somebody forces you on the street by yourself, you know, it's not what you can do by yourself. But as a board, together, work more together, we're not a board to be by yourself, so, okay, all right, anything else on that one? Okay, number five, and this is a, a tough one, this is not something that's unique to Harvey, North Dakota, or to anywhere. What strategy of research could help reduce teacher burnout and, you know, too much underplates, more parents, expense support, P D isn't helpful, better administration support, I have a, teachers are committed, but exhausted, they feel overburdened, overburdened, unsupported, stretched by student behavior. And I can't tell you how that has changed in my forty-five years of teaching, is all the, the different acts of, you see the, the needs from parents, the need for support, it wasn't there before. I don't know what happened, I don't know what, I don't know what to tell you, but I just know that that is something that wasn't, it's really, really a big thing now. Just look at this, I remember, I mean, personally, for a second, my daughter's thirty-six, and I remember when she was getting her education degree, her mother told her to get every single endorsement you can, to make yourself marketable, to get, to get a job, because she applied for her first job, and there was twenty-three applicants, twenty-three applicants. Now, we're not keeping going on. So why is that happening? It's happening because of a lot of these things right here, so.
So, and I.
Well, you know, it's part of the, like, too much underplates, that is something that, I mean, it's last, how many times we've let this, it's true, I did it again this time, and then it's like, I'm not just blaming them, but they keep adding more things that are mandatory, that the teachers have to teach, and it's like, but how, first of all, I say to them, how can you keep making it mandatory if you don't give us any money, and it's like, and they only have X amount of minutes in a day, so how can you keep adding something every time? But I don't think any of them have any idea what it's like, you know, to be in a classroom and.
Well, I think I'm gonna be kind of coldly honest, and I think that, you know, it says right in there too about, you know, even student behavior. Is that, from what, from stories that I've heard, even from only just about a decade ago, from when I was in school, is that, like, behavior is, like, what is deemed as acceptable behavior is just alarming nowadays, and like, to where, I honestly feel, and I have a friend who is an educator that I talked to about this, is that I think there's a lot of people that wanna go into, into education because they keep getting told by other people how they should run their classroom, or how a principal should run their building, and how they're wrong, 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 and, 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 and they, they can't follow through with anything unless, without people jumping down their throat, which makes it a really strenuous, stressful job, and I, you know, I, I know for my, for, for my, like, if I was a teacher and I was trying to manage my classroom and, and, and keep it orderly, and, and then I had people trying to run down my throat telling me how I was doing it wrong, I, I probably would get pretty stressed out by that too, and, you know, and I heard from some of even our own staff too about, you know, they're getting hit. And it's like, what? And like, like, that, yeah, it's like, and like, like, to the point where they're getting like, marks on their, like, hard.
We have to bring, we have to bring a police or.
Yeah, right, and it's like, that, that to me, it's like, I was just like, I, like, I don't ever.
And some of the, getting, we have our students that can't, you know, that have disabilities, but still, it is hard, because they're not being considered to take that, and, I know Trista said she can't believe just other four districts that that was ventured, and how she's like, Harvey had, like, three, four times more than the other schools do. Okay, we should say, and, supposed to be in that this fall, we've got a handful more again, but there'll be just as much. supposedly, again this fall, we've got a handful more again, but it'll be just as much as the last fall years.
Well, and some of what's been discussed is that even if it's student behavior, not in any fault of the student, right, it's not like, really, but it's like, but a lot of our, like, they're not qualified for that level of, of different types of care, you know, I mean, that's, that's
And unfortunately, a lot of it comes home to the hole, I think, too, you know?
So, I don't know, that's...
But that's one of the things that I asked Dr. Harvey into that, at what point, and I know part of the issue is that they all have to be integrated in the classroom, and there's all those rules and all that stuff, and it's like, at what point can you say, we can't control this student?
Like, it's disrupting everybody else's learning experience, injuring staff, and...
Really, really, really has to be very bad before they can even do that.
Is there a point, is there a point?
I believe there is, but I don't, I don't know how that works, I don't, you know...
They say that they have to be evaluated and things, or whatever, or something, it's not the little bit that I ever caught from being here, you know, I don't know, paying specifics to whatever, about it, but, yeah, but nowadays, especially if the parent, if that's what they want, they wanna...
Okay, so...
But, yeah, there is a point.
We're not gonna be able to change behavior, uh,
No.
Uh, but I think what, what our goal as, as a board is, is to make sure we have policy to deal with things as correct, as correctly as we can, so to answer her question, maybe we need to explore what the, what the boundaries are. I, I, anything else, I, I wanna, I, I wanna go back, I'm gonna back up a bit.
We go to the, uh, spending and insurance, I don't know, for a thing.
Yep, okay.
Well, and, and another thing, you know, that, that talks about the PD, and I think the PD is
Yeah, that's what I was gonna bring up.
A place where we could have our teachers have input. Um, also, I think, teachers have been asking, oh, and there's a lot that are completely on board with, you know, doing all these new things all the time, but a lot of teachers are like, let's quit trying these new things for a while, let's, let's get, you know, the, the mandates, even, even from administration, well, each, each teacher has to do one, um, project-based learning. Oh, Lord, kid, there's no other thing on our plate. And, and I'm, I'm not saying project-based learning is bad and good, but if it's not your style, Mr. Doctor does fabulous, but not everybody does. And so these, these big fads, and it's constant fads that they try to push on the teachers, and I and I think we, we need to support our teachers and not necessarily force a fad on them.
Okay, uh, going back to the PD, that required that we do something else, correct?
I think so, I'm pretty sure, I wouldn't have no idea what to do, but I think it is.
But I think, I think it also pretty creative thing, so I think you can...
You know, that could be something, for a lot of leadership, is to, like, you know, I, I get there's, you know, we can't have all three of them just be working your classroom teacher, but I think that could be something that they could talk about, and leadership would say, okay, we're trying this one, and they're like, we've left really like one or two on that, or then have a, one could be in your classroom, type of, whatever, you know, maybe that's what they could express, that would be part of it, express a little bit of what they'd be like to see happen, you know, like, I know one year, they really asked about more training as far as for some of these students, or whatever, and, but it was other different things.
Well, and they're asking for, for more training with tech as well, you know, there's, just, we need to give them the kind of training that they need.
Do they get the, they what they learned, or do they just get assigned to learn this?
There's some discussion, but for the most part, the PD's arrangement, like, that Adley and, um, to know who's more responsible, the principal, or the student, or...
Principal, I think, I looked at the last high school one, he had a broken at the group, some worked on psychology, some worked on something else, some worked on...
Yeah, all the time with them.
Gotta put them into their areas, so they work, so they, they gotta kind of choose. I think they did, and sometimes they all gotta go, I wonder if they all have to go through, they all have to do one thing.
Yeah, I think if we did one part together, then in the afternoon, I think it's almost like they did their own thing.
It's almost, it's almost...
I've seen only seen one agenda this year, for...
And that's another thing on the calendar, I know, and I, again, I don't know what the consensus is across the schools. But I know when Mitch was here, we had done some, I think he had done some, um, a survey or something, but the teachers are definitely talking about wanting some full-day PD, and for the half-day PD, so that they can do their education portion in the morning, and then implement it in the afternoon, and, so, I mean, it's just things to try, but...
Yeah, okay, I just got, oh...
You know, that's where I think, I think that's what should come out of the leadership, then, they should talk about, you know...
Can we more influence? Okay, okay, I'm gonna go to six then, is anybody else, can I think of mine? Okay, uh, number six, I, I believe that we probably need to do something, I think I'm gonna talk about this first. Um, what can the school do to better recognize and support staff, say thank you personally? Uh, I think a lot of us do that, but visit the buildings more, and then recognize all staff fairly. I'm not sure what that means, but, um, hopefully we're doing that in a fair way. Staff will feel recognized in a meaningful way, simple personalized gestures go for them in their brain, it may want more board and leadership visibility. Appreciate time to act as supportive, including self-expression, so, I'm just gonna say my two cents here. I kind of think we need to do more of this, because I feel awful when I hear a baseball team's name, and don't know what to do, can't put a face to it. And so, I, I still think we need to be more visible ways, I just, I'm gonna, and I don't think we have to cop the other school, but I'm just gonna give an example. I went to the Leeds, oh, first day, because my daughter, um, she, she, grandma, grandma had to go with, with the granddaughter, because her mother was a teacher. And so, they go, they, they had open house, not as many high school kids went, of course, all the elementary went, so they did that. And then they went and had lunch, and guess who was there for lunch? The school board was there for the lunch, the school board were frying the hamburgers, the school board was serving the meals, the school board was feeding people. I just think we need to have a little more of that somewhere, and it's like, okay, I spent money, but I don't think, that's not what I'm after, I just think we need to be more visible sometimes to get to know them, not saying that you have to give them a turkey at Christmas time, that's not, I don't think that's important. But I think it's important that we are more visible, now, what are those are you thinking about?
I, I was thinking would be a good thing that before school starts, to have a picnic, and then, hey, we got everybody hired, and then they get a chance to see who they are before the school year starts. And I get we can't, but, you know, maybe, I don't think people blind, you know, do a pop lock, and then we did like all the survey, then we got all, like, paper stuff, or whatever, but then you see, okay, okay, this is who we hired, this is who we hired, you know, or whatever, the chance, you know, especially the younger, the younger ones, 'cause you don't, you're like, them, church or other things, you know, like other people.
We got some community leaders too, you know, we have, with, you know, some people, community from Bela.
Right, right.
And for me, it's, you know, it's, it's hard when I'm not self-employed or retired, to pick up in the middle of the day and go, you know, sit in a classroom at ten AM. You know, like, some of that's...
Well, you gotta be careful too, about even like doing that, but I mean, even just to...
Well, I'm just...
I mean, there's something I have done, I guess personally, I have done sometimes that, probably not at school, but when I see somebody out in public, and I would do it with parents, although, you know, go specifically to say, hey, I am really proud of what your students did, or did that, or whatever.
Yeah.
Trying to do that with some of the teachers when I see them off the ball, because I, you know, throw back in the topic for the class.
If I don't know the teachers, then I can't say that to them, so...
Well, right, that's what I mean, yeah.
My point, my point here is,
Yeah.
I'm not saying we gotta do everything elaborate, I think we just have to find some simple ways of being more visible.
Right, that's what I was saying, but even if, you know, if we got a chance to know, then if I see that somebody in the grocery store, then I could go up to them, I'd be comfortable with knowing their name, and say, you know...
I love that idea of, of being at, um, you know, the open house, or, you know, serving for, you know, whatever, whatever.
Yeah, that's a neat thing.
And there's gotta be opportunities that we can do things like that, and that.
Okay, so I wrote that down, and, and as a, as a board, let's just kind of look for ways to, to do that.
And, and like, like, too, to have, I, I don't know, you know, a picnic or whatever, but an introduction at the beginning, like, of some kind, whether it's a, I mean, it could be incorporated in the open house.
Well, they would have those two days of professional development, if you put...
And there's nothing wrong with the board being there for half an hour, introducing themselves.
Well, that's, well, you know, batteries in this for lunch, I mean, you don't need to be there all day, I want them to do their own, you know, come up with what.
Anyway, I think that's the easy, I think that's the easy fix.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, let's go to number seven. Okay, so, um, our biggest challenge right now, of course, funny, that's our biggest challenge, so, there's no, there's no issue, so, that's gonna be a big challenge here. And staffing turnover, and again, you know, I, I, I know that we have turnover, and I know that, you know, some...